Love her inside in a wedding.
All right, let's go ahead and call tonight's work session to order. All right, we'll session with the planning commission on the 50-year plan, reviewing the economic opportunity analysis. I'll just hand it on over to you.
How about this one? Oh, that one feels much better. Very tall though. Hi, I'm Beth Goodman, your consultant on the 50-year plan. And I'd like to walk you through what we're doing with one of the earlier parts of this, the economic opportunities analysis. So here what we're looking at is our short-term schedule, the schedule for August 2022. It's not 2020 anymore through May 2023. And what we've accomplished to date is we've developed a vision statement that we're bringing back to the committee here, the SAC, in January to talk about. That's a vision statement for the 50-year plan. We've also drafted the economic opportunities analysis separately. You've had a housing needs analysis drafted. And our next step is looking at what we call other land needs, which is land needs for things like parks and schools, public facilities, that kind of thing. So that we're looking at all land needs that would be within the urban growth boundary. Our step after this is to start looking at your urban growth boundary, whether you need an expansion of the urban growth boundary or not. And then also look at establishing urban reserves, which represent where the city will grow for the 30, sorry, the 20 to 50-year period. So you'll grow for 20 years within your urban growth boundary, and then beyond that, the 20 to 50-year period. So that's what we'll be going to through next spring, and that continues on for about a year after that. We'll also be working with your comprehensive plan to do some updates to that based on all of the work that we'll be doing. So with that, unless anybody has any questions, we'll go into an overview of the economic opportunities analysis. And EOA, Economic Opportunities Analysis. Cities do them in part to meet legal requirements for Oregon statewide planning goal, goal nine, with the economy. So you can update your comprehensive plan based on this newer information that we've brought you in the Economic Opportunities Analysis Report. That will become an appendix to your comprehensive plan with a new factual basis. Looking at it more broadly, the EOA is useful for understanding the conditions and forecasting future economic conditions to inform things like the city's economic development strategy, how the city is going to use its commercial and industrial land, and then doing coordination on economic development over these next few years. And it's also useful for helping the city to plan for the 20 to 50-year growth, which is in urban reserves. Out of the EOA, what you get is the EOA report. It's a technical document, and it's nearly 100 pages long. It's got a lot of information in it about Scappus and about economic conditions around the region, and then also recommendations for comprehensive plan changes, which will be coming down for discussion a little bit later in 2023. So what I'd like to do is walk through some of the preliminary findings of the Economic Opportunities Analysis and talk about the forecast for growth or commercial unemployment land. So starting at the top, the state and national trends and how they're affecting Scappus potentially. You might have heard that we have a tight labor market. Still have increasing labor costs. Earlier in the year, the unemployment rate was at pre-pandemic levels, and it hasn't particularly increased since then. As of April 2022, wages increased by five and a half points year over year, 5.5%. Wages are still increasing. I believe I heard nationally today that they'd increased by about 5% in the last month, month over month. We've got our highest inflation rates in 40 years. They've cooled a little bit since this data from earlier this year. But they're still exceptionally high for right now. Because of the high inflation rates, you've got rising costs in borrowing money as well as rising costs in housing. So it's become harder this last year to become a homeowner, plus costs of housing and rent have both increased this last year. You've got an aging population here in Scappus, as well as around the nation and the state, which is going to drive need over the next 20 years for replacement workers. So another way to think about this is even if you didn't have any employment growth, so your number of employees in Scappus stayed the same over the next 20 years, you'd still have a fair bit of demand for new labor. So when you look at companies, they're going to need to replace the workers who are retiring here over this next 20 years, and they're going to have to hire more workers. And then we've got these increased work-from-home trends, that it's clear that work from home has changed since the pandemic. It's not entirely clear, especially in a community like Scappus, which is different, of course, than, say, downtown Portland, how the work-from-home trends will play out over time. It seems increasingly likely that hybrid work will be more the norm, at least over the next few years as we go forward, and that there'll be increased acceptance of work from home, especially in communities where you have a good internet connection. That's going to be vital for growing, based on people moving to Scappus and being able to work at a company, say, in Boston, or Nevada, or California. So that internet speeds continue to be very important. You've got transformation of the retail sector. As e-commerce online continues to grow, you've got retail businesses that are either changing the way that they're doing business, or they're shutting down. I don't think that that means that there'll be no demand for retail and retail-style commercial over this next year, 20 years. What I think it's going to result in demand for is more things that are experiential. So retail that you can't really do over the internet very well. I don't know about you guys, but I'm hesitant to buy a couch, for instance, over the internet. I want to sit on the couch before I buy it. Certainly, things like going out to dinner, bouncy palaces for your children, that kind of thing. Those kind of experiences are certainly going to continue in our communities. Increases in automation, so businesses, or really jobs that have lower, and to some extent, middle-wage jobs are higher at risk for increases in automation. So not just in manufacturing, but also in service businesses, like fast food, automating, ordering of food, that kind of thing. You guys are in a unique position with the OMC here, where you have organizations that are at the forefront of some of this automation. So there's ways in which I think Scappus has opportunities for growth based on these changes in business. It may have the potential impacts of climate change. Of course, Scappus will feel those in things like its flood plains, the natural resource areas that are more susceptible to larger storms, to drought, all of that. We'll be facing that throughout the state, of course, and, you know, the entire world. And then we've got changes in ethnic and racial diversity, where we're seeing increases in racial diversity and ethnic diversity across the state, especially with our growing Latino population. So that presents a different set of opportunities for Oregon's communities. And it's important to think about those changes as you're thinking about your workforce in the future. So one way to look at all of this is to look at commuting trends. So when we look at people who live and work in Scappus, this is based on data that's about three years old, maybe a little bit older. So it hasn't caught up. It's still pre-pandemic data, because that's the best available data that's available. About 322 people live and work in Scappus. So they live at businesses in Scappus, and they work here. About 1,300, almost 1,400 people commute into Scappus from outside of the city somewhere. They live in places like Portland, Hillsborough, and St. Helens, for instance. And about 3,400 people, almost 3,500 people, commute out of Scappus for a job. So they go places like, well, Portland, Hillsborough, and St. Helens. So you're seeing a lot of connection with those other communities around town, around the region. You might ask yourself, what is it that Scappus can do to support development of more jobs so that people can live and work in Scappus? And of course, one of the pieces of this is development of housing that's affordable for people who have jobs in Scappus. That's not the focus of this project, but that is the important piece that really connects housing and economic development. As we're talking about different types of jobs, if there are opportunities for housing, some people at those jobs will probably choose to live in Scappus, if there's opportunities for housing that's affordable. So before I go on and start talking about Scappus's specific comparative advantages, do you guys have any question about that flood of data? Okay. So as we're developing the economic opportunities analysis, the core of what we're thinking about is what are the comparative advantages and disadvantages in Scappus? So why might businesses want to locate here? Why might businesses not want to locate here? So here, we're going through a number of the comparative advantages. And we'll also, I don't think we're touching on the comparative disadvantages. They're in the report. Some of the advantages are both an advantage and a disadvantage. We could talk about that a little bit. So one of the things that makes Scappus different from all the other communities around the region is the OMC and PCC. So you've got training opportunities for workforce here. And you've got a development of manufacturing research, and that has opportunities for developing clustering of manufacturing related to that research. So put another way, areas around the airport where manufacturing is allowed are really prime, I think, for businesses that want to be near the OMC or are developing based on research at the OMC, for instance. You've got Highway 30, which is a connection to the broader region, and it enables freight movement. Without Highway 30, I would say Scappus would, well, perhaps not so much exist in quite the same way. It would be a much less attractive place to be, even though Highway 30 brings a lot of traffic congestion and brings its own challenges. So it's also a bit of a disadvantage. Your proximity to the Portland region's an interesting one, because you're outside of metro. You're only about 30 minutes away from North Portland. You're pretty near the port. It's a very hard word, evidently. So freight movement's a little bit easier. But you're not part of the region. You guys have your small town. You have a different community here, a different atmosphere here than you have, well, certainly in Portland, and most of the communities around Portland. But you have all these transportation connections to them. We heard from stakeholders about your cooperative city leadership and the stability of the city leadership. That's an important thing in economic development. It's much better to locate in a community where government is getting things done, and it's dependable, and you're not necessarily going to get a lot of surprises. You've got good regional partnerships and cooperation with those partnerships. So obviously, you have the Port of Columbia here, and you've got economic development agencies that are working there. You've also got connections to the Portland Economic Development Agencies through Greater Portland Inc., et cetera. You've got an employment land base. So your buildable lands inventory frankly would make a lot of cities envious, especially cities of your size. I've worked with a lot of cities all over Oregon, and they would love to have your employment land base, your industrial land base. And a lot of it's got some services near it. So there's infrastructure that can support business growth, which is a barrier to business growth in so many places. The rail line, which I'm sure sometimes feels like a barrier, because it does divide the city in certain ways, and the airport, opportunities for freight movement through the airport and other activities at the airport. You've got your high quality of life, all those things there. Great small-town atmosphere. It's safe, good schools, great library. Community events, opportunities for more community events, which are things that you can do to build economic development, as we will talk about that in a little while. And your proximity to outdoor recreation and your city parks are pretty exceptional. I personally have driven two hours to Scappus to kayak up here, because even though the bay is enormous and terrifying as a kayaker, it's a fantastic place to kayak. So you're attracting people from well across the region and across Oregon to celebrate your outdoor recreation, not to mention your bicycle trails. All right, so away from the qualitative information and a little bit of a dive here into employment in Scappus. And essentially, what you've got is about 3,300 employees who work at businesses in Scappus. Here, we're showing the largest sectors. So obviously, your largest sector with the most employees is retail trade, followed by government. And the little red lines represent average wages. So the average city wage is just a little bit below $40,000 and a little bit below the average county wage shown on there. So your largest sector with retail, it has a lower-than-average wage, down somewhere around $30,000 are the average wages. Government, above-average wages, closer to wages around $50,000. Manufacturing has above-average wages also, as does construction, and there's a little bit of agricultural services. So when you look at recreation, accommodations, and food services, as is typical, it's got lower-than-average wages. So as you're thinking about economic development for the future, one of the things to think about is a balance of different wage levels. So businesses, well, jobs at different wage levels, and then also opportunities for growing jobs that have above-average wages. This data is specific to Scappus. The county average is county, and then the city average is Scappus. Compared to the state, you've got lower-than-average wages. The state's average wages, which I can't call to mind this moment, are well above 50, and I think closer to 60.
This is people that work inside Scappus.
This is businesses that are located in Scappus, so jobs in Scappus, regardless of where people live.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you break apart what would categorize as government?
So government is anything, I don't think we have any tribal government here. So it's going to be state government, federal government, and local government, and school district. So an awful lot of your jobs there are in the school district.
So I'm just following up on some questions, and Marissa kind of touched on it. So I'm seeing the red line on government, higher than the average. The red line is the average pay in Scappus.
The red, the little red line above government is the average pay in the government industry, in the government sector.
In Oregon.
In Scappus.
Scappus, okay.
None of this is Oregon data.
Okay. I'm just trying to break that down, because teachers get paid a lot less in Scappus than in other areas, so I was...
Well, it's going to be really a combination of all levels of government. So just looking at, in the EOA document, page 19, Exhibit 4, this is the covered employment and average wage by sector. That breaks it all down, and this is very specific to Scappus. We've got other data elsewhere in the document that is at least county data. I don't remember if we included state data here. So it's about $47,000 for government on average. It's the state government, if you have any federal. Yep. Yep. Yep.
And the averages, are these all FTEs? Or is this aggregate based on tax data? So people doing part-time employment, things like that also account in?
Well, it's not aggregate based on tax data. It's aggregate based on what different employers, each employer, reports to the Oregon Employment Department. So it does include part-time staff as well as full-time.
And then average, or what kind of average? I always ask this question.
It is truly a mean.
Okay, means.
No worries.
May I go back to that just for a moment? I have a question. So I just want to make sure that everybody heard that right. So it's even including part-time employment, so that's bring down the average?
Yes and no. What's essentially reported to the Oregon Employment Department by an employer is, on a monthly basis, FTE equivalent. So if you've got two half-time people, that would be reported as one FTE.
Okay, so it would be based on a 40-hour work week, then?
Essentially, yes.
Okay. All right, thanks. I think that was important to clear.
Certainly, certainly. And if you look at, say, the number of employees in government, it's 366. And that's essentially 366 FTE that have been reported by all governmental agencies through the Oregon Employment Department.
So it is a total of FTE, and FTE for our purposes does equal 40-hour full-time employment?
Yes.
Thank you.
Let's keep in mind, this is 2009.
2019. They have. We just, I'm not using 2020 data for anything, because it's not good data about this, because it reports something that was very anomalous. And 2021 data became available about two days ago. Certainly. Any other questions there? So this is covered employment. We want to go from covered employment to total employment. And we do that in the report, and I wasn't going to belabor that. But we do that in the report based on county averages. And so covered employment is unemployment that is covered by, well, unemployment insurance. So it's covered. Total employment is reported and available at the county level, but not available at the city level. So in Exhibit 7 in the EOA, we show you the method from going from covered employment to an estimate of total employment. So there's about 2,200 jobs in Scappus in 2019. Within the county, about 67% of employment is covered. So then we inflate up to about 3,300 jobs. And so that's a way to account for the fact that things like the gig economy aren't represented in your number of employees. Things like railroad workers of some sorts aren't represented in covered employment. If you own a retail store, and you don't have any employees, and you're not covered by unemployment insurance, that's not covered by covered employment. So all of that, we get an estimate of that through the estimate of total employment, based on what we know in the county. So that gives us an estimate of 33, 37 employees in Scappus in 2019. And you see, as we're starting our employment forecast, we start with that number. So 3,337 employees. We looked at a couple of different employment growth rates potentials. So we looked at the forecast of population growth and said, what if employment grew at the same rate as population growth? Then we looked at the regional forecast for employment growth that includes Columbia County. We said, what if Scappus employment grew at the same rate as employment in Columbia County? And then we looked at historical growth rates in Scappus between 2008 and 2019 and said, what if Scappus grows as it has been in the past? And in discussing this with the committee, we agreed that looking at, in the future, Scappus growing at the same rate that it has in the past made the most sense. So that's what we've based the rest of this analysis on. So we're assuming that Scappus's employment will grow by about 2,126 employees over the next 20 years. Are there any questions about that?
When you say...
I'm sorry.
When you say the region, do you mean the seven-county region?
Let me see which region I mean, because it is in here. I was just looking at it a moment ago. So it's for, it's a funny county. The northwest region, which the Oregon Employment Department defines as Benton, Clatsop, Columbia, Lincoln, and Tillamook Counties. That's the, I know, that's a weird employment region for Columbia County, but that's the region that Columbia County is in for the Oregon Employment Department.
Did you look at available employment land in the seven-county region versus are available?
No, no, no. We didn't look at the employment land. Are you talking about for the Portland region, first of all, the Portland MSA?
The metro has the three-county metro region, and they have the seven-county.
Yeah, the metropolitan statistical reason. No, we didn't look at employment land availability there. I can tell you, from working at a lot of communities in that seven-county region, that Scappus's buildable lands inventory, which we'll look at in a few moments, is markedly different from a lot of communities in that region.
Right. The trend seems to be is other areas don't have available land.
Yes.
And it comes here.
Yes.
If the, if the, and there have been a lot of articles lately about the lack of industrial land in metro.
And that's been the case for decades.
So it seems like that would impact our future.
And it's one of the reasons to look at the higher growth rate. Growth rate that we're looking at at 2.32% is relatively high. And when we get to the end of this analysis, what you'll see is that for manufacturing employment, Scappus has more capacity than it's expected to use based on this employment forecast. So you could grow still further than what we're forecasting. Are there any other questions? All right, so then switching over to buildable lands. And then we'll marry the two up at the very end. So what we did is we looked at all of the commercial and industrial lands inside of the scatro, now I want to say metro, inside of the Scappus. UGB, that's where I needed to go. We looked specifically at the constraints here. And as we look at where you've got land that is buildable, where you have constraints shown on this map, even if land is vacant there, it's not considered buildable. So things like the 100-year floodplain, if there's vacant land, which there is, that has 100-year floodplain on it, it's not in our inventory of buildable land. So what we're looking at here is the inventory of buildable land. In red is your commercial land inventory. In light blue is your land that is zoned for industrial. And then in purple is your various forms of airport employment land. And we've separated that out based on the airport employment overlay. So things that are in the airport business park, the airport industrial park, and the employment area are separated out in the next slides. So this is all land within the urban growth boundary. And when we look at this all together, you've got about 489 acres of unconstrained buildable land. About 39 of that is in commercial. And we accounted for, in a few minutes, we'll talk about it, the fact that some commercial land is expected to develop with housing. So married that up with the expectations in the Housing Needs Analysis. Almost all of your vacant land, or a lot of it, is in your airport employment area. And so what you see is that there's 37 acres in the airport business park, 49 acres in the airport industrial park, and 300, sorry, 253 acres in the east airport employment area. So most of your vacant land is in the east airport employment area. So when we look at the size of parcels of your employment land, it's also an important consideration. A lot of communities have a lot of land and a lot of parcels that are small, so say, smaller than five acres. Yes, ma'am.
I need us to go back one.
No worries.
Okay. Is this on?
Here.
Okay.
Okay, you, I want to go back a slide. You, let's go back to the map. You said something commercial land, we have commercial land that's going to be pulled into residential building.
So in your housing needs analysis, it assumes that a percentage of your commercial land is expected to develop with housing. And so we've used a consistent assumption about how much land will be available for just plain commercial development. So we've got that number here, I believe, in a couple of slides. Certainly. Are there any other questions? All right. Okay, so in the end, the big point here is you've got a fair bit of land that is in sites larger than ten acres and a fair bit, a lot of it, in sites that are larger than twenty-five acres. A lot of communities don't have that. So you have what I would call a unique asset in your, in your inventory of land. And in the EOA on page fifty, exhibit twenty-one gives you more of a detailed breakdown of that. So as we're thinking about economic development and the kinds of sites that most businesses need, and as we've been talking to places like Business Oregon and the port, what we hear is that for the most part, businesses that are considering moving into Oregon and moving into Columbia County and Scappus, mostly what they're looking for, if they can't find a building that's already built, businesses usually want an existing building because it's much easier to deal with, is they're looking for sites between five and fifteen acres, sometimes as large as twenty-five acres. You've got the occasional business that is looking for a very large site. And Scappus has opportunities that other communities don't for those very large sites. And most of that around your, your east airport area. So then we hop back to the forecast of employment. So we're going with that forecast that was a growth of two thousand, one hundred and twenty-six new employees. And we say, okay, in the future, what if demand, the types of employment land are similar to what you need now? So a lot of your employment is in industrial, a lot of it's in commercial and office services. Some amount of it is in retail commercial as well. Government, we're going to strip off at the end of this because government employment is taken care of through the called, through the other land needs analysis. So then if we look at that amount of industrial, retail and office employment and look at it in terms of how dense does it grow? How many employees do you typically get in those kind of areas per acre? So we've used some employees per net acre as assumptions. We come out to a demand for about two hundred and six acres of land. If we compare that to your supply of land, what we see is that you've got about three hundred acres of surplus land for industrial. So thinking about it differently, you've got about three hundred of acres where if you grow faster than Scappus is expected to grow for industrial, you have that opportunity. You have more land than you technically need over the next twenty years. You've got a deficit of land for commercial. So the housing needs analysis assumed that forty percent of commercial land would be available for housing only. And so this assumes that sixty percent will be available for commercial. That feeds into your deficit of land for commercial. And partially that's a deficit of land for high-density housing. And this also assumes that some of the land at the airport business park would develop with commercial, but the airport business park's commercial land isn't a perfect substitute for commercial land that is located along Highway thirty because the airport business park is off of Highway thirty. So we aren't underselling the, or overselling the value of airport business park for just purely commercial. So in the end, when we look at your urban growth boundary, you've got enough industrial land. That's an opportunity that you can use beyond the forecast that we've got here. You've got a deficit of commercial land that might be something that we're taking up in an urban growth boundary expansion proposal that we don't have together yet because we want to put that together with the housing needs analysis and then with the other land needs analysis to look at it all together. And we'll be bringing that back to you in, I believe, in the spring. So I had a little bit about potential growth industries, but it's a little bit off the side of what we're doing right here. Are there any questions about this? I just wanted to do a time check to make sure that I'm not running out on time. Okay. Okay.
So can we, if we have a, and I'm looking at you Lori, because based off the information that was shared, we have commercial land that there's a percentage that's earmarked for residential growth and we currently are now, based off this analysis, have a deficit. Can we now consider removing that percentage that's being denoted for commercial or commercial land for residential and just committing it straight to commercial and not residential growth?
We will look at what sorts of changes we want to make in the development code moving forward to see if we want to switch some of that up or also part of the larger picture would, would be to say, do we want to just have more high-density zoning district to allow for that housing rather than having it all, you know, assume that forty percent of our commercial land will go to housing? And so, you know, to do the HNA and EOA, we had to make some assumptions about that commercial land and how it could develop in the future. And so that's what we did here to make sure that both of those plans match the assumption. But as far as how we move forward, then that's a discussion for the larger group to decide how we're going to meet those needs moving forward.
And I would also point out that an awful lot of your commercial land is not necessarily where you'd want high-density housing. So there's a large amount of commercial land to the north of the city along Highway thirty, which may not be where you want to see high-density housing. So I think what Lori is talking about is there's opportunities potentially for rezoning or for expanding UGB and zoning land for housing in other places. Are there other questions?
Just for the record, Lori, can you tell us the year that we had an urban growth boundary expansion last?
On two thousand and ten, and then it took several years for the appeal to resolve.
Right, thank you.
It was November twenty.
When it was resolved. Thank you.
And in a lot of ways, you're reaping the benefits of that now of having that, done that expansion. All right, so the types of industries that are most likely, are more likely to grow in Scappus, this is important for economic development considerations, are things like manufacturing, especially related to Omic industries. Professional and scientific and technical services where they're related to Omic industries, but also looking at the opportunity for people to do more working from home. So, you know, fully working from home rather than partially working from home. Tourism, so your hotels, restaurants, your specialty retail, services for residents like financial services, restaurants, childcare, personal services. Aviation-related industries because you do have an airport with a fair bit of land at it. We've heard that there may be growth of, say, things like hangars and that kind of thing at the, at the airport. And then traded, trade industries for construction or manufacturing support are also the kinds of industries that might grow here. So as we talked about this a few moments ago, but your, your typical site needs for those kind of businesses would be for small-scale manufacturing, looking at if there's opportunities for a business incubator, say through Omic or another organization. Businesses that want to locate in an existing business, a building rather. Businesses that are looking for mid-seas sites, so five to fifteen acres for large manufacturing spaces, so those larger than fifteen acres. And those can of course scale up to much larger than fifteen acres. In commercial, a lot of your businesses are going to want to locate an existing building with multiple business or some of them may want a building that's dominated by one business. And then land for construction of a new building, generally sites, you know, two acres to five acres, occasionally up to fifteen acres. If you think about a new hotel, for instance, it might want a five-acre site. So thinking about as we're looking at potential zoning and rezoning and that kind of thing, how we're, we're looking at these different site types is important, I think. And then this leads into your economic development policies. We made some recommendations in the EOA about this. So, and these will make their way into comprehensive plan policies. Looking at three categories of economic development policies. One, celebrating the quality of place. So looking at ways to enhance and promote the brand of Scappus. So that's in a lot of ways a marketing strategy. Supporting new community events, that's partially a tourism strategy. And partnering on infrastructure development. So making sure that where you've got vacant land, it's actually available for development because it's served with infrastructure. Expanding your business development of existing businesses. So continuing to prioritize being a business-friendly environment, engaging with Omic and PCC and looking at developing a more entrepreneurial ecosystem. So how do you support development of businesses that may spawn out of Omic or may be supported by people, essentially entrepreneurs, who went through programs at PCC? And then supporting upward economic mobility, looking to prioritize opportunities for family wage jobs. A lot of the industries that we talked about are comparatively higher wage. You also still need industries that are lower wage and provide other employment opportunities. And so that gets to expanding economic opportunities for all people. So that is, that is where I would say we are leaving your EOA and you can see the next steps here. As we go into two thousand and twenty-three, we're working on the other land needs analysis. We'll be starting the urban growth boundary analysis and comprehensive plan update. There will be updates to the development code. We're not sure what those updates will be at this point. But that's okay. That's part of this process. We'll have the, some stuff to bring to the annual town meeting and some public open houses through two thousand and twenty-three and continuing to work with our very helpful stakeholder advisory committee. That's what I have for you tonight.
Thank you very much. Any other question? We get eighteen minutes out of here early. All right, let's go ahead and adjourn work session. We'll start our city council meeting at seven.